I'd like to welcome all of you to the April 18th meeting of the Board of Regional Commissioners with Cape Cod, and please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people of Washington, our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join us in remembering all of those who have served our country, both here abroad, and especially for all those who have given their lives for us.
That was a nice start. Have a little courage upon you. I think we need a new chair.
That's a doctor, Patty.
Right. Okay, we want to start with public comment, and who's first?
Joanne.
You want to bring that seat up a little bit, and introduce yourselves for the next.
My name is Joanne Maramato. I'm Senior Scientist with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, and I'm also staff for the Barstool County Coastal Resources Committee.
Anne?
My name is Don Kiran. I'm Assistant Director with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod.
We're here today, thank you for marrying us on this very short notice. This concerns the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project. As you're aware, the Cape Cod Water Resources Project was approved in 2009 and funded in 2010 with $6.5 million in federal stimulus funding for the first round of projects only. The full tenure program would restore 1,500 acres of degraded salt marsh, 4,200 acres of fresh spawning habitat, and 7,300 acres of shellfish beds, which would support the Cape's coastal economy. The value of the Cape's coastal resources and coastal economy is listed there. Commercial shellfishing, $6.3 annually, $6.3 million annually. Shellfish aquaculture, estimated $4.5 million annually. And the value of fin fishing in two towns alone is estimated, was estimated, $3 million in 2009. And also, salt marshes support, rouse support, 75 percent of harshing and recreational important fish. So far, the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project, to date, has funded and initiated approximately 29 projects, which are stormwater mitigation projects to restore protection of shrimps, restoration of tidal reefs with salt marshes, and restoration of compared fish ponds. These have been initiated, and they're expected to be concluded by the end of this year. Also, to date, from this first round of funding, 96 jobs and 24 firms have been created through this program. So it's been a very successful program, both for restoration of coastal resources and for the local economy. However, permanent funding of this tenure program is needed. The USDA's watershed program supports programs such as the Cape Cod Water Resources Project, and others nationwide. And this national watershed program of the USDA needs funding. The FY12 federal budget did not fund USDA watershed program, and we are quite alarmed about that. However, it appears that the current draft Farm Bill in the Senate Committee apparently contains funding for watershed restoration. We need to ensure, we need to encourage our legislators to make sure that the USDA watershed program is funded, and that the Farm Bill that includes funding for the USDA watershed program has funding for watershed planning, watershed operations, and watershed rehabilitation for Asian watershed dams. These are projects that would benefit not only the Cape Cod Water Resources Restoration Project, but also other similar restoration projects in Massachusetts and nationwide. So, support for the USDA's watershed program would have not only a regional benefit in funding the Cape Cod's project, but also state and national benefit as well. Last year, at the request of the County Coastal Resources Committee, the county commissioners sent a letter to legislators urging continued funding for the Cape Cod Water Resources Project. And this letter was extremely helpful for making the support. This spring, the Coastal Resources Committee voted to request again that the county commissioners send a letter to legislators urging support for the Cape Cod water project. And we have drafted a proposed draft letter, and we've also included in here a little packet the exact Cape Cod letter that was sent out last April 38. For this letter, two senators, Carrie and Brown, and Congresswoman Deering. Time is of the essence. The letter's supposed to reach the senators' offices by this Friday. And so we respectfully request that the commissioners vote approval of such a letter to be emailed and sent out to senators Carrie and Brown.
I would make a motion that we send this letter of support. And since we have it right here, we can sign it.
I'll support that. And I had one other thing. The young secretary for USDA, she spoke for the National Association of Public Officials. She talked about her concern about funding Cape because of the importance of agriculture nationally as a contributor to, let's see, to Cape economic vitality.
Yes.
So you do have, I know that you have support. At the agency level, there is concern to funding resources.
I want to note that Don Kiran, who has been working with the National Watershed Coalition to build support for funding of the USDA's watershed program, and that it is work.
We think too, we shared your concern this year when it wasn't funded. And so this is very good, and thank you for providing this letter because it outlines exactly what we should say. And we appreciate your doing that.
Thank you.
We've made, we've already initiated contact with, we've been maintaining contact with our legislators, but with this new effort initiated contact with Senator Carrie and Senator Brown's office, so they are aware of this. And we've also reached out to the other project sponsors for other projects in the state. The watershed program that's going on in North Shore, which is a model for the Cape project. And it's some dam rehabilitation project sponsors from the interior of Massachusetts that all stand to benefit from this. So as Joanne said, it's not just a Cape project, it's a Massachusetts benefit as well as a national benefit. So just a little bit of friendly nudging from the county commissioners, along with the effort that we're doing and what the other sponsors are doing would be very helpful.
How did this happen to get in the Farm Bill? Do you know that?
Yeah, well, the, it usually was a yearly discretionary funding line item in the budget for the watershed program. And it was, as we know, it was eliminated from the budget last year. But the Farm Bill is up for renewal this year. And it has many similar conservation programs in it. Not just farm stuff, food stamps, all sorts of things. But in addition to the conservation items that are already in it, there has been work to insert the watershed program into this five-year funding mechanism so that we don't have to go back to Congress every year and ask for money. The other benefit of this is that it funds the national program and gives the National Resources Conservation Service a lump sum of money to use at their discretion to distribute to the various projects across the country. And we feel very comfortable that we would benefit here on Cape Cod from that because our Cape project has been touted by that agency as a national model for them as a new way of looking at watershed restoration. So they're very much looking at the Cape project to be successful, they just need the funding for it. And so the National Watershed Coalition has been spearheading the effort to get it inserted into the Farm Bill.
Excellent.
Good. It has greater benefits than we would anticipate.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a motion and a second.
In the stick and?
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Anything great? We will slide it and get it on its way. You can take a witness and email it.
Would you like it?
Well, we will need a copy.
Yeah, Joanne, if you would just stop in the office and ask Barbara to make a copy.
All right, we can. What would you prefer us to do? Would it be easier if we?
You know, I just, I think that it may bear more weight coming from officials.
Great from us, okay.
I have done some instructions for emailing the letter, showing the urgency.
Really?
Do you, so we give this to you?
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. You made it very easy.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, and good luck.
Thanks.
Keep us posted.
We will.
Okay, so, any other public comment? Beth, Albert, George, where are you?
Are you not, you're not?
You have a separate issue?
I'm okay, we're separate.
Where are you at?
You're always okay. We're naked.
So, Mark suggested I come before you today to discuss the possibility of our department taking some space up in the renovations that are going on over the gym.
Over the gym?
Well, in the gym, I'm sorry, over the, in the loft.
In the loft.
I don't know what, it's really a second.
Above the lab.
Right. So this started because I had actually asked John, ladies and facilities, about putting in soundproofing in our office, and he said, "Well, before you do that, why don't you see if there's something else?" And so I made copies of what he provided for me, so you can see this space.
Is it greenery?
Well, actually, this, I think, was originally designed for the Health Department, and then the Health Department and Environment is moved into a different space. And so as far as I know, this space is available.
Does this make sense? Should you be in this space?
Well, in principle, I haven't seen this, this plan at all.
But in the space above the lab?
John said he spoke, well, this is, this is.
I mean, he was in this.
I'll take George off the hook. George and I spoke a little bit this morning about a different topic, and he mentioned that Beth is coming in this area. And my only question is, is what do we do if the lab needs to expand further beyond sort of what they're already occupied? That's, that's my only question.
Yeah, this is, and I don't have the full floor plan. This is only the one section that John provided for me.
Sort of the other side of that coin is what's left sort of in the old jail, which is sort of where this whole thing kind of originated from. Some thoughts after we were touring, Beth mentioned, "Oh, you know, that's a better space up here." Because she's pretty hyped where she is, as you know. She's in the end office on the other side of the building, in the middle of the building, I mean. And there's not really any conference space and staff stuff. So the option is originally to go into the old jail. But sort of the space that's left is sort of not contiguous to wherever the house is. So it'd be a little bit isolated, so. So Beth and I guess John, I don't know if you had any input. George came up with this idea, which I don't have an issue with, except for that question.
Well, but you know, I think it's a good idea from the standpoint that the remaining space in the old jail really needs to be looked at in a comprehensive way. And the more we just put people there because the space is available, the more complex it will be further down the line. So I think, to get to where you need to be now and to use that space, which does make sense, in a way. I mean, and then if sometime in the future, other different types of adjacencies, and I would call them, come up, where it means that you would fit more in with whatever else is being planned, not with work, but I think for now, and even maybe into the future.
I think it's an idea. I have a question. When is the loft area going to be finished? To be able to be moved into?
We're looking at, I think, a complete building kind of wrapped up by the end of the year?
In September.
Remember, yeah.
Yeah, it's difficult to know because we had planned on, because of the financial piece, doing a whole lot of upstairs. There's one area that's planned for an expansion of the lab already, the new instrument, particularly the LCMSNS, on the rear portion of it. And GOMIN has some area plans there up until about where I can see this, this space being. Talking to the architects, the place was planned for office space, very much laid out like this. So it doesn't sort of go against their particular plans.
Right, this came, this was not my buildup. This was, this was what John already had. I had no input into this whatsoever.
Right, it was planned for offices. It was just as the finances got tight. We had not planned on moving our department into this area since we're already sort of settled in in the old jail area, and it goes quite nicely there. So in that, in that way, this makes sense.
And just, the space that is available, for office space, would accommodate your department, right?
The space that was planned here or there would no longer accommodate office space because, but when we began our planning process, there was very little in the way of thinking about a medical reserve corps because it was upward, it was a part of the program. So we have the medical reserve corps in their planning area there. Kendall's staff was too. And there was no real thought that it would blossom the way it has blossomed. There are three, three staff people, and storage area required for their records, secure storage area required for their records. Emergency planning, which was primarily Sean O'Brien, that has expanded. So I will, I could clearly say that the thought of moving us back into that area where we originally planned, the second story of the gym, is probably impractical and doesn't meet our space needs, along with some other expansions that we planned as far as staff goes. So in that sense, it makes perfect sense to say it was planned for office area. It definitely fits within an architect's premise because there was a lot of thought going into, what are you actually going to have upstairs? This certainly doesn't counter that. And we have no immediate plans for this area here. The tail end of the gym, we're expanding laboratory into, not loft, the instrument. And where we go after that, it would, it's totally conjecture after that, you know, it's vision.
Yeah, it does, but it seems to make sense that at least part of your department, I mean, I know that there's the additional medical team and the safety.
Medical reserve corps.
See, and the safety, you know, is kind of overflowing from that department. Well, your department itself, it just, God bless you, it just seems to make sense that you're in the one building. I mean, your lab is there, your work is there. And I'm trying to keep, there's, the lab is not attached to the building, to the jail, to the old?
It's in the gymnasium. It's attached by the tunnel.
It is, it's by the tunnel. So, and going through that tunnel, and then just going right up is where you are? Am I right? I'm trying to figure where you are compared to where the gym is.
No, if you go down the tunnel, you come to Jack Mead's storage area.
Then you go to IT.
Then you go to IT. And then to get to George, you have to go upstairs.
Right, if you went immediately upstairs from IT, you'd probably be Kendall's area, which is the subdominum program, have three staff people. And then through that side of the doors, we get into tobacco control, which we have more staff addition there. And the medical reserve corps area. And then as you went toward the front of the building, you'd reach my office, Sean's office, and above that.
Remember when you go into the conference room, the Harvard Review Conference Room? You go up the stairs, the tunnel's sort of underneath that.
Correct.
And it goes into the gym, and you can see the gym to the right as you go up the stairs to the left, there's a Harvard Review conference room.
Okay, that's a practical matter. What I'm hearing is that there's space available. Is that a determinant of all the time when, when you not know if you need expansion space? This seems to be an appropriate use of the space, and it sounds like we should go ahead.
It was already planned for offices. It would be a nice.
So when is it available?
September.
September? October?
Yeah.
John didn't seem, I saw John this morning, and he, the whole issue of, because I had said originally, when I was thinking you were going into the old jail, I said, "Well, who's going to pay for that? Because I don't have any money yet." And so he came up with that sort of question, wondering why it was a question. And I said, "Well, that was when we were going to the old jail." There would have to be some money around that. So he didn't, he's got the money in place to do whatever he needs.
I mean, for us, it's just, it's just really throwing up walls, which we had not planned on doing because of the money situation. And the only walls we had planned is there were toward the rear end of the building, two offices contiguous, well, they were adjacent to one another, which would have been emergency planning and Kendall's office, which now would not be adequate space. We're going to combine those two for the laboratory for the new instrument, the LCMSNS.
So on the second floor of the gym?
Yes, the second floor of the gym will definitely have lab facility there. We're using plumbing, which was really the restroom plumbing, for mentoring and water supply.
So on the second floor, assuming Beth goes and your insurance, the new insurance, who else will be up on the loft?
Would only be GOMIN.
GOMIN.
And that new instrument lab, which takes about, probably about a half of that space to the rear. The other space is really how open to the loft. There is no wall.
Right, in the middle.
They actually look over the laboratory.
So if you do Beth, and GOMIN, and the instrument, is there any available space on the second floor?
There's one office space that I know of, which was planned, I believe, by the health nurses, by, by the health nurses on that location. And that one small office space.
Is there a noisy area up there in the loft with the lab and all the other stuff that's there?
Well, if something goes on the second floor, the instrument, we anticipate, you won't hear anything out of that instrument. It will be essentially a white room, it's for pharmaceuticals, personal care products. People wear perfume, I'm not a pet, instead, secondhand. So the front end is really, it's really somewhat isolated. It can be somewhat isolated. And if it fits, that's the, we have no, absolutely no problem with that. We're just, I'm just looking ahead to where we're going with the laboratory.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking of too.
It's not going to scream ahead, but there are definitely some things we have planned. And if we can do it within the footprint that we will have, we'll do it there. If we require additional space toward the front of the building, we'll come back in front of you. But right now, that's not like, right there. And here is a need that is right there, so.
So this could be a temporary situation.
It could be permanent, it could be temporary. We're always sort of somewhat proud of ourselves to be able to work within the contract and what we have.
Right.
And we'll make every attempt to do that. If we need the space, we'll let you know.
It just seems to me that if it's the health lab and it's your department, it makes sense to have health offices in that other area of the gym. And if that means moving several people from the Health Department, what would? Well, not even just to make room, I'm just saying, it just makes sense to do, I mean, I just feel that that, in my head, it makes sense, so.
There's no physical ability, capacity-wise, to fit the entire Health Department in that gym anymore.
Correct, that is, that is a true statement.
I tell you, you're not capable of doing that.
Correct. And in my mind, it does sort of make a nice fit. The lab is, our staff, with the exception of two people, don't have the immediate connection with the lab necessary. We do landfill monitoring, we do beach monitoring, and from monitoring, I do it. But they'll be right there. It's not like, you know, it's no more than a stone throw from where my office is to where the new lab is. So it's not like it's a huge walk there. And it does make sense, I'll speak more philosophically now, to have Beth's department there since a lot of what we're doing in public health nursing, a lot of what we're doing in the public health arena, finds a little bit more overlap with Health and Human Services component. And I would enjoy that connection since it offers opportunities for more funding opportunities, and for innovation opportunities with a department that at least has the word "health" in their name.
How do you feel about this now that you've talked?
You didn't have a motion for this one?
Well, we're still discussing. How do I feel about it? Well, I mean, if there's a chance that I'm going to be asked to move, I would rather not move. I mean, I don't want to, it's just, it's just way too.
Crazy.
It's too confusing. But with that said, I mean, we've got the Human Rights Commission looking for some space.
Mm-hmm.
We have interns, which, because we have such a small staff, we're depending on more and more our interns. We have pre interns this summer. So, you know, and it, so if there's going to be any growth to our department in any way, I mean, I need, I need more space. So does it make sense to invest in the space we have now and soundproof it? Because it's, because of the staff needs, or, you know, I would love to move, but if, you know, I'm going to be, you know, it's hard, it's hard to say, but you know, it's, it's an unknown, so.
We should talk about this.
We should take a look.
It is.
Well, have you gone over and looked at it? The space, I mean, is there room to grow up there?
It's not there yet. It's not there yet.
One water, one water on the tin top, right? Nothing up there, walk around, stuff the space up.
But I agree with George too. I mean, there are, you know, there are, you know, there are areas for synergy. I mean, so that, you know, that, that's a nice, that's a nice thing to be more physically, you know, in proximity. But, you know, I also don't want to do something just without having thought through it all. And I know, initially, this whole thing was, was planned out for the Health Department. They've grown, they can no longer use it, so it's, it's.
Well, maybe what you need to do is to take some more time and look at this, and look at what, and what your expansion needs might be, and whether or not this space up here that's even available, all of it, or whatever, however much of it, would be, would be useful for you. So I think you need to think about what your needs are.
Well, I can only look by what, right, what they've drafted out here because it hasn't been built out yet.
No, I know, but I mean, maybe it could be drafted out in a different fashion.
Oh, actually.
In other words, you would have to look at, you have interns, so you need space for an intern. There are, whatever needs.
Yeah, John and I did talk a lot about using what, using the plans and having them, that it would fit for us, at least from what I can tell by looking at the paper.
It looks like you've got like an extra internal space, from what I.
I don't know what these X's mean. Is this?
I just, I definitely decided today.
No, definitely not. Let me go back to sort of what Chila's thinking, as I kind of ponder a little bit more. I think, sort of, I think maybe George, what she's suggesting, beyond just everybody moving into the loft, is, does it make sense for another section of your staff who's currently in the West Wing to be in the loft, that makes more sense, and then put Beth in maybe that space?
Right, right.
And sort of, you know, unless there's a good reason to do that with some synergy or something, then it's just moving from the sake of moving, you know what I mean?
Right.
Well, there are definitely sections of staff that deal more directly with the laboratory that could go in that space. I was, as I was hearing us initially, my first impression is, I know what it's like to be planned in spaces there. The offer was, you know, we'd have no objection certain.
Yeah.
Do I, would I lay this out differently if I was had control of everything? Yeah, I would. I'd put staff over there that more directly relate to the laboratory in that space. I would plan expansion in an area that was more administrative in our space that doesn't connect with the laboratory, and it would work. And it would be fine to work that way.
It troubles me that there hasn't been enough that I've called. But you were looking at in terms of what your anticipated need would be. at, in terms of what your anticipated need would be over the next five-year period, and also what your anticipated need would be over the next five-year period. Because I think a five-year, you know, a five-year period is as body permanent as you get in public sector stuff.
So I think you need to take a little more time and look at it.
Would you guys mind if you and George, Beth and George and John, maybe somehow there was some kind of?
Well, this goes back to like having a plan of the building and having.
And being comfortable that it can meet your needs.
That has never yet happened.
If it takes a week or three weeks or whatever, I think you need to do that and see exactly where people will fit, how they will work together, whether it meets all of your needs now, and then, and five years from now, based on what you know about the next five years.
If I could, just, just as to mention or to let you know why this type of planning was not in place, is as we proceeded with the laboratory, the cost of the laboratory and the building, the shell, everything, it became evident to us initially that the second floor financially was not going to be feasible. So I, as director of the health department, then looked at that as a boundary, not to go beyond. If that, if it's opened up, that the second floor is feasible to do something, that of course opens the boundary, and you can expect that, as the director of the health department, certainly Beth is director of her department, will relook at it. It just seemed to me like, okay, it looks like the money's reaching this far.
Right.
We get the first floor, we can save something on the second floor, because the infrastructure need isn't big up there, so a few walls are fine. But if that opens up, then of course that should open up a period of planning between departments and even a relook at where I would put my.
I'll tell you something.
For sure.
Yep. I'm going to ask them that one back though.
All right.
All right, we'll follow up on this. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're staying away from Bill. Bill has a call on National Research. Sorry, I know, I know, we're sorry, we don't want to act like we're.
There's a, okay.
Okay, so.
There were a couple of things that Mark said might be appropriate for this. One is that you've okayed free of my out-of-state jobs, and these have not been at the county's expense, but those agencies that have asked me to go do presentations. And there's some in all of those presentations, aside from bringing to the rest of where what we do at the test center, there's been a clear focus on the presentations, and that has been the pharmaceuticals, personal care products, endocrine-disrupting compounds primarily originated from septic systems. Those have been the focus of the presentation, because some of the grant work we have done has underscored the need for the research in that area, and some of the research that has been funded to our department, those results I am bound by our contracts under those grants to present to national conferences. So Rhode Island was National On-Site Waste Water Recycling Association, Kansas was a Kansas on-site, which covers pretty much a lot of the mid-country states, and Oregon, which covers the western part. And I go to those conferences to keep up with what that kind of research is, where the research needs are, and where we can fill in particularly the needs for KICCO. Because of the close hydraulic connection of wells to septic systems, and now, more importantly, identified it's a real key topic, fresh water as well as marine water inputs from septic systems from these pharmaceuticals, particularly endocrine-disrupting compounds, that's what we've been presenting on. We've recently completed and nearly going to press with what we call a white paper, which is a discussion of all pertinent topics relative to septic systems and CECs or contaminants of emerging concern. And you'll get a copy of that as soon as it's done. Pretty much there, I'm doing a final edit, and we'll publish that as part of one of the grants that we got. So that was what I was here for, those three out-of-state approvals you've given, and that was one of the topics, so.
There is a continued concern I have about the effect of hormones that enter the water table through, through septic systems. And there was an article that we sent, it was a paper titled "By a Physician," and we spoke about that last year, and that's an important area, and I wondered, during these conferences, there's a very prominent discussion about the effect on hormones, the effect on, on the regulation of children.
Well, it's pretty clear that there are three priority issues with relative decepcies in septic systems. At the top of the list, in my estimation, and I put it in white paper, is hormone disruption. It's not so much the hormones, those are fairly low concentrations coming from septic systems and the managemen level. However, some of the plasticizers and some of the phenolics, the factors that we're using, that are really, Silent Spring, who's been before you with some of the presentations, has really focused the issue here in KICCO. That is the issue. And it is not so much hormone disruption in humans, because that, although documented, is really, there are not enough good studies done on that, but environmentally, hormone-disrupting compounds are really having worldwide, I mean, the number of papers published just in the last four years on that particular topic has like climbed exponentially compared to the previous years. And it continues to climb. Every time, the little vibration in my pocket is a Google cert, a Google alert when a paper is published, and we review that paper, and we put it in context of what's happening on KICCO, with somewhat the wastewater disposal issue. And so that has been a lot of chatter at the conferences, but primarily by academics. Baylor, some scientists, Colorado School of Mines, some of the stuff at UTL Berkeley. And we keep in touch with that research, because that's going to be some fundamental questions that they answer and ask here at KICCO relative to decentralized wastewater and seeping issues. So that white paper is going to be fairly important. And DEP continues to support some of the grant proposals we're putting together for the test center, and we are working on some, we've submitted some concord proposals or collaborating proposals with Silence, Silent Spring, Dr. Shane Snyder out of University of Arizona, and others that are submitting proposals down that side. We're using our test facilities to trust and stuff up. They're one of the few facilities that actually have leaching, so they're simply, so between ourselves and Baylor, Colorado, a couple other places in the country. They're not doing it for, a lot of the research has held back because of the analytical capability. But through your grace, we've had some analytical capability build up here in our laboratory. In fact, we will have some capabilities within the next year to determine all of the hormone compounds and a lot of the phenolics, the factors which are hormone-disrupting compounds. And that's, that's really what enables us to, to be in this wide arena. I've also stroked the approach at Woodslow Ocean Graphics, because I believe that in the context of expanding the lab capability, we need to be able to determine some hormone-disrupting characteristics of some of the wastewater streams we generate, and what's out there in the environment. So I'm looking into starting something called yes, why yes, use estrogen sensitivity testing, and I believe our laboratory will be capable of it, and I'll be not coming to you for support of that, but rather. So, most of the discussions in my out-of-state landlives have been relating to that, although at the national conferences, they all want to know what we're doing with nutrient recovery, nutrient, nutrient removal, things like that. But pretty much, between the two challenges, the nutrient removal piece on the onsite setting is relatively minor and well-understood, and there are new technologies coming, we're testing two new ones recently. And we get inquiries, maybe one a month, from companies around the United States, and if they look like they're good candidates, we'll test them. Otherwise, we kind of discourage them to go to another testing center, that's really looking mostly at secondary treatments.
So how is the nutrient removal going? I mean, what is the latest?
Well, there are three technologies on the horizon that we see, three sort of brown technologies. One, which is more proprietary than nitric system, and everybody beats that to death, but sequencing batch reactors as well as membrane bioreactors. There's two companies actively doing research and development at our facility that are pushing those numbers down and try to scoop that out to the market.
But none of them have been permitted, then they have to go through a permitting process?
They would have to go through a permitting process here in Massachusetts, which of course is a little bit more rigorous than other parts of the country. That's why they come to our facility, because, there's the old expression, New York, New York, if you make it there, they make it there. Well, in the septic business, it's Massachusetts, if you can make it there, you can make it there.
So we're still looking at probably 50% removal, 70% of the time for most of these systems right now?
I would say for the majority of the technologies up there, yes, but for the cream of the crop, and nitrates of course is permitted, just not permitted at that level, I would say that technology, you could, moving that more into the, yeah, that's kind of a sure bet.
And there's all maintenance costs and fees that go with those, is that?
Right. So that was one thing I wanted to, to bring up before you today. There are two other briefings. One is the Attorney General's Office has contacted us regarding the availability of some funds to be used for environmental concern, particular very focused concern, and that is because they have gotten a judgment or in the process of getting a judgment against the particular offender, and they're saying, "We have this amount of money, could you give us three ideas or give us some ideas on how to use it?" I gave them the ideas, they came back with one, a particular one, that was relevant to that particular things, and they said, "Fine." And it kind of looks like we will be getting money to administer a revolving loan, I think, for the removal of underground tanks in the residential setting, or underground piping by lines, and be able to give the folks a loan, and it would be a role for revolving type loan. So you will see before you at some point in the near future, a sort of memorandum of agreement between Attorney General's Office and the county, specifically administered through us, and I thought I would put that really right on the, say, back as our septic bullet program, which is pretty much a game of revolving loans. And it would be administered through there, and the funds would be available for loading out, and I mentioned that we would probably take some of the funds to advertise that particular program, for folks to have underground tanks in their backyard that we possibly don't know about. As you may know, the county health department has for years assisted all of the towns in regulating underground tanks, organizing tank gigs, addressing this issue, permitting, making sure they know where they are. But we know there's probably about 120 to 150 out there we don't know about, and there's about 80 in our stable of those that have not yet been removed, according to regulations. We've encouraged tons of past regulations, which they did, the 20-year removal, 30 incidents. So that is one of the things you may see before you in the near future.
Is it? It's interesting that you mention that, because I had a neighbor this year who removed a propane tank, an underground propane tank, it had been there for 40 years or more, and it fueled a barbecue pen. And he was told that he had to remove it, and they had to, they had to let some of the propane out for a few days, which was very odorous, I might say. And then in the end, though, it came out, and that was the end of it. So I'm sure if he had had it, there are other people.
Sure, for a gas tank like that, which is.
Are you talking oil?
We're using oil or gasoline.
Oh, gasoline.
Primarily oil tanks, a lot of 330s were put in, 330 gallon tanks were put in, they were basement tanks, but they were buried inappropriately, and some of them arrested. For years, we have been encouraging, in fact, we have our department a testing program for the town to go out, we test the tank, we test the soil they've been added, and at that point, we normally have that educatable moment for homeowners, and encourage them to take the tank because eventually they are going to wait if they're not double-contained. And so we've had a program like that, and this, these monies fit right into that program. And the other ideas that we brought up, they said, "No, we like this one."
On the septic, on the loan, on the revolving account, so you're saying you're just going to use the septic, or it's going to be modded, it's going to be on the same loan?
It would be modded on that, and probably run out of that same office. It would be a separate account that could be set up here, that could only be used for that purpose, except for the advertising piece, and then it will just keep revolving. And I've worked out, I've talked to Mark about this, about the liability of the county, should they not pay a loan back or whatever, it won't be a lien like we have on the septic loan program. So it will be a little bit different, but we will not be held liable for loans that aren't paid back. We'll just do all due diligence and make sure we're lending people. And the final thing that I brought, brought before you is, you will see in the near future, and this is more of a possibility, but I've been talking to Thelma, as the Eco Toilet Subcommittee, and then put together a program for figuring out whether they could be used in a decentralized sort of approach to watershed management for their nutrients. We've designed a study plan for them, we've done a lot of support work to help them, guide them along the way. And they are looking at possibly entering into an agreement with the county to oversee that program, and work with DEP through permitting issues to see how, what the edge of the envelope is and how far you can push that as a decentralized, I shouldn't say, controlling nutrients.
So it would be like in a specific neighborhood?
No, it would be cap wide, because they know, "Fine, but they're not going to get enough participants." So essentially what it is, we would monitor the gray water from these systems residual, take responsibility for handling, and we end up with what I've asked about at the top. Everything to do with that would be managed by somebody in our department, very much like we track all the IA systems now. We track them, get them right in that same holder. So we have a program already to do it.
So you would be testing their efficacy?
Yes, correct. We'd be collecting all the information, we'd be determining the study plan with DEP, we'd work that out with them to say, "What do you need, DC, for them to prove this point to you?" Working that out. And so I've been working with Monroe, who is the chair of that subcommittee, and as you know, I'm not a member of that committee anymore, so.
Now, would that be voluntary on the part of the people who would use these? Would they have to purchase them?
Well, here is the other part. Thelma is thinking of an incentive program, where they actually give somebody $5,000 to, I've said that we could administer that program under this agreement with them, they would pay for some staff time, but we administer that $5,000 gift program. But the primary thing is, if they get that money, they have to agree to certain things. "Let us monitor your gray water, let us take your water records, let us intrude upon a little bit of your privacy, how many people you have in the house, what, give them details," which actually add in to determining the loads in the end. So they are part of the data necessary to do the proper valuation. So normally, you can't ask somebody, "Okay, can you tell me exactly how much you spent here this year, how much water you used?" But under this agreement, where Thelma will be giving them money, they'll have to sign something that says.
That's $500,000?
That's whatever it is.
I'd like to follow up on that conversation when that's coming closer, that we have more, you know, we go through this again just to have a better understanding.
Sure, you will, we're, I've said if they agree, I think the committee is meeting Thursday night, because they could either do this, shoot it out to the world in a proposal, or they could agree with, that the county might be the better way to go. And I've said to them that they could go either route, and it's not like we're looking for work, it would be something that fit within our mission, because all of these are ultimately controlled by boards of health, they should be overseen by boards of health, and our mission is to support board of health activity, so it fits in there, and it's open to do that, you have capacity to support it. We do. What we would do is probably hire somebody for a couple of days a week to do certain aspects of it, some of the gopher work, which is basically collecting the samples. Some of the other stuff is really electronically affordable, and we would develop a system to do that and do other. to do that and do other capacity.
Okay, that's good.
So those are the things. Thank you very much.
That's a good update, George. Thank you.
Bill, you should really come home.
Yeah. You have my thoughts on the next item. Just to call Carrie to take the, whatever.
Yeah.
Take the vote on this so I can.
Yeah, all right, I move that we have Carrie to take minutes from the stage board.
What about the, the summary of actions?
Oh, I, the only question I had, had was establishing a sick bank for a person, a children's code and then extending that. What is that?
That's what we usually do. We do it sort of on, we don't have a formal sick bank, but in our policy, we allow people to set up an individual sick bank.
Oh, so that they can put hours into it. Okay, all right, that's, I just didn't understand it. All right, good, all right.
Do they, do they, do they make their vacation time or their sick time?
Sick time.
Sick time.
Okay, so it can be rolled over from year to year? Is that what it's?
Our sick time can be rolled over.
Yeah, so you can put it in your bank, you can put it in your bank.
Is there a maximum?
We usually put a limit on up to five days or depending on the situation, maybe more.
All right, a second. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It must be because of something at the table.
Hope you feel better.
Bye, Bill, feel better.
I didn't say something. Yeah, you should not have come, but thank you anyway.
Why don't you go to the assembly?
Yeah, do that. Go over there.
Contaminate. Oh my God, I can feel, I feel like I'm getting germs going up my nose already. I actually felt it, Billy, I was like, I feel like I'm getting this.
So somebody move the, you move the.
We did, we moved the minutes, we moved, I moved second.
All right.
And was there anything else? So anything from the, from the audience?
Any questions from the press?
Yes.
No?
Sure.
We will not be meeting next week.
We're not meeting next week, okay.
There will be a lot of your thing.
And you will be here the following week?
I expect to.
You know, we talk about is maybe the following week, meeting in Falmouth.
How would you like to do that?
I think we should do that, you have your living room.
Yeah, we have a living room.
Yeah, I know, I know, you have one.
If you want to do that, if I got to say, Bill, we could do that.
Yeah, that sounds great. Why don't we do that?
Doing high guilt?
Well, no, I was thinking you could meet in the.
Oh, in town hall.
Town hall. I mean, there are cameras there.
Oh, yeah.
The cameras are all set up.
Yeah, it's okay.
We won't need Steve.
Oh, well, no, you could come. We wouldn't see other cameras.
Yes, somebody means so.
Yeah, that would probably be better that you came. I get into all kinds of issues with the FCTV. This way, you could just bring your cameras, just like we would if we were in Nausicaä.
Will we have a better sound system? We have to talk about a sound system somewhere down there because this is, we're, we're videoing this and people cannot hear it. It's live.
Well, we're, what we're going, hopefully going to do is John is installing the lift for hand deep cap access into the Harborview conference room. And once we do that.
You mean one of those chair lifts?
It's a, yeah, right next to the stairs there. So once we do that, we'll move up there, we can put in the sound and cameras.
And we'll have our smart board and we can have all kinds of great presentations.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's what we're.
Oh my God, almost like, you know, modern towns are up here.
I need a tape change.
All right. Well, we can move to, are we done?
Uh, yes, yes.
Do you have any other business?
I, I don't, no. I'm just looking up, so the next meeting is.
May.
May 2nd.
May 7th.
And do you want to star?
Ten o'clock?
Want to do it in the morning?
Probably.
If there is.
Well, the assembly meets that day, so you'd have to come back. Maybe you can meet at 11:00.
They're not, they're meeting, they're voting on the budget, but they're, they're not, as far as I know, they don't have any afternoon thing before four o'clock.
Oh, so we can meet 1:00.
Let's meet at 1:00.
1:00. And then after the meeting, just have opportunity to settle.
Yeah. But you won't be with us?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, because that's why we're in Falmouth. So Pat can.
I know, but I just didn't know if she was going to be coming this way.
Well, I'm not going to announce it.
Oh, you may not come with.
Okay, should.
I may have.
Okay. All right, so.
Motion, George.
I make a motion for adjournment.
Second. Those in favor, stay on.
Aye, thank you.